The bat boxes that we made. And my dad, a few weeks before the workday, went to Lowe's and got sheets of plywood, cut them and sorted them into like little kits. And on the day of the workday, we split all the boys into groups and had, went step by step on how to build them so that it was more efficient. Bat boxes can comfortably hold around 200 bats, offering them a good place to live. It'll help control the insects population in the area, which will make Stallings Park a more enjoyable place to relax and spend time. These are some of the pictures from the workday. Thank you.
One box can hold up to 200?
Yes, sir.
Babies or full grown bats, are they that small? Or is how big is the box? I'm sorry, did you bring one? Yeah. So are they territorial where they come back to the same box?
It'll take them anywhere from a few months to about like two years, depending on how close they live right now for them to find the bat box and then come back, tell everybody else that they should come. But it depends on where they are right now, but it can take anywhere from a few months to a few years for them to move in.
Is there any food or any?
Yes, sir.
Nothing in there, it's just a shelter?
Sure.
Last question, where's troop 144?
We are in Blair Road Methodist Church.
All right, any questions for Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we don't have any public comments. And so we got our consent agenda. Got the A there, the minutes from those, and then the amended budget ordinance for the town hall roof replacement. Did everybody see Alex's email explaining what's going on with the roof?
Yep.
Any questions on that?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Ayers, all in favor?
Aye.
As have it. Alrighty, reports. Mayor, well, Tuesday was certainly a big day. I'm disappointed, Dan Bishop didn't win Attorney General, that was the one that disappointed me. He's, I don't know if y'all know, Dan Bishop is our current US Congressman, Mark Harris has taken his spot, but Dan Bishop is a true conservative man, which I enjoy, and he's a hard fighter, and he's on TV a lot up there fighting the battle, and he would have done the same thing for North Carolina, but lost, but hey, we'll support. Now, we'll do a good job, so. Any, Graham, you got anything for us?
No, Mayor.
All right, Lori?
No.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I'd brought, bring up is that Stallings will be the point place for where Wuma will be meeting, and we'll be meeting a little bit later, six Thursday, 6:30 this month. And I'll get everybody the exact date so that we can post it out, but the thing that's going to be special about this is that we are going to have the, what the county manager coming, and so he'll be kind of just taking, filling questions on whatever topic we might want to ask until time runs out. And so the idea is if that, if anybody here wants to come to Wuma, please come. And then if you've got any pre topics you would like him to talk on, to send them so that he can kind of do all of his research before he gets to the meeting. And so, kind of a bigger exercise this time than our normal Wuma meetings, and looking for, you know, some updates on some pretty critical topics, and especially now that, I guess, we just had the election, kind of give us some updates on what he thinks is going to, you know, kind of happen with the new electees.
All right.
Don't know the date yet.
I do, but you're going to ask me that and I can't remember, so. I'll, I'll, I'll send it to you because we moved it because the normal date would have been Thanksgiving, so.
Kevin? On Election Day, I manned a poll and passed out things, but one in particular was our Stallings information for the hotel tax referendum. Had a chance to talk to people, they understood what was going on, but I think a lot of folks probably didn't know exactly what it was and. Fortunately, the referendum lost, I hope we have a chance to talk about it and bring it back for next year's election. Second thing, the same day, same place, when I wasn't up there to divide with you, I was down at Stallings Elementary and ARP, and Dean ARP, not together, they were, obviously they are together, they weren't standing together at the same time, I got to stand with Ann, talk a lot about stuff, and then Dean got to talk some specifics, funding that we might be looking at or not getting at. That was opportune. Chamber lunch at the Ag Center where all of Chamber of Commerce folks and a lot of elected folks were invited to listen to the local delegation speak, so we had Todd Johnson, Mark Brody, Dean ARP, and David Willis talking to us, answering questions, talking about the state of the state, state of what's going on with Helene recovery, other potential issues that they see coming up in the next session. Nothing in just specific that affects us, but it was just a very good opportunity to hear from them. Not me ask good questions, a lot of good questions were asked, that were.
That's it.
All right, thank you, David.
Nothing for me.
Brett? Alex, what you got for us tonight?
Good evening, everyone. The first thing I'd like to do is submit the budget line transfers for October. We do this, these are intra department transfers that we do within my authority, but we err on the side of being transparent and submit those routinely to the board and submit it into the record. So we're doing that here. We've also got a planning update from Mr. Shong, as well as an update and a couple recognitions from Chief Frank. So Mr. Shong, do you mind, there you are, giving us an update on the transit overlay district, please?
I sent out a timeline of next steps and timeline for review, and you'll be receiving all of our draft deliverables on this timeline. So tomorrow, you'll be getting an email for drafts on comprehensive land use plan update, future land use, and small area plan, and a request for feedback in a timeline, timeline. So I just wanted to let you know that we've, we're at the tail end of the Silverline project. Reminder, we received an 80, 20% grant, or 80% grant to cover the Silverline project costs, and we'll be bringing you all those deliverables soon.
And I'm sure you're aware, I mean, Alex and David and I attended the Matthews.
Yeah, we have lots of deliverables, so hopefully we can complete the project.
So I was looking at the timeline though, but March of 25?
That's, that would be like the latest date that we would bring you all the updates. So we were hoping to get the entire project adopted in January up to council, and then after that project's adopted, then we can do the text amendments to implement that project.
Any communication between you and the other, the planning staff of Matthews on?
Not, not specific, not Matthews, but I can get them involved if you'd like.
I'd just like to know what they're, what they're doing.
Yeah, I can definitely get them involved.
Questions for Max? All right, Chief Franks?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Aaron's going to have a slideshow run through here, it's just some photos of what happened. As you all know, during Hurricane Helene, the State Emergency Operations Center put out a mass call for officers to come assist in the Hurricane Ravage area. We had seven officers volunteer to go up to, they went to Fairview, North Carolina, in a place called Garren Creek. There they assisted, which is regular duties of any police officer, manning checkpoints so people wouldn't go through traffic. I know AC Perry had a call where somebody pulled a gun on another guy because he's trying to get a generator at Powers House, and he was sent out there to assist. Also during that time, you saw some of the stuff in the lobby here of the council. Detective Webster and Sergeant Ben Davis orchestrated a relief effort, and there was a lot of a mass supply of our community turned out to deliver supplies for up there. McGee Corp delivered the water for us, and then I think Sergeant Payne took two truckloads, or two trailer loads to drop off, and you see some of the pictures of the devastation up there. But I'd like to call the following officers up to have them just to recognize their volunteer service. Assistant Chief Perry, Officer Holtz, if you all will come up here, Sergeant Payne, Detective Webster, Sergeant Brooks, Lieutenant Cranford, Detective Josh Smith isn't able to come tonight, and Sergeant Davis. Although Sergeant Davis did not volunteer to go up there, he did quite a bit here in the ground. He facilitated with the Stallings Community Committee, the Stallings Community Emergency Response Team, the Union County Amateur Radio Society, and the Matthews Fire Brigade to come sort all those supplies out, box them up, and get them labeled so they could be delivered to the airbase up there so they could be deployed to those that need them. So I just wanted to take a moment, we've created a, just a certificate of appreciation for all of them for going. Obviously, you know, I think a lot of people wanted to go, but not everyone could, but they made the decision to volunteer and go up there and help our fellow North Carolinians as I think we all appreciate. So with that, I'll present them with their certificate.
Now where, oh, go ahead, Chief. Where is Fairview? I mean, I'm pretty familiar. Oh, East of Ashville? Got you.
No, some of the folks even in that area still don't have water. I think AC was talking to some folks that are still, and restaurants have opened are still running off bottles and like the coffee pots that are, they're boiling the water in and let the water, to get the water out, so. It's a long road. They're not asking for people still, but I know they're still deploying provisions up there, so our town turned out in more, more way than I could have ever imagined. So I was very impressed with the town and what these officers did.
All right, we got, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for your leadership.
Now, I'll ask Officer Johnson, if he'd come up front. As you know, many times when an officer does something exemplary, we try to acknowledge them in, in front of our community. So Officer Johnson was nominated for a life-saving award. Once we get a nomination, it goes to our awards committee, which is, consists of our previous officers of the year. And for this life-saving award, the committee voted to give this, and I'm going to read a synopsis of the event. On November 22, or I'm sorry, November 2nd, Officer Brandon Johnson responded to a well-being check regarding a male who was jumping in front of cars on highways, on the Highway 74 overpass. Upon arrival, Johnson observed a subject who was attempting to step in the roadway in front of passing vehicles. Johnson made contact with the subject and told him he was there to help. It appeared he was suffering from a mental health issue. As Johnson kept talking, the subject kept moving closer to the edge of the overpass. The subject then began to throw his leg over the edge and leaned over in efforts to jump off the bridge into the traffic below. Johnson was able to quickly grab the subject and take him to the ground. Once on the ground, the subject began to struggle with Johnson and attempted to remove Johnson's service weapon from his holster. At that time, a Good Samaritan stopped and assisted Johnson with getting him, the subject handcuffed for safety, and he was transported to the hospital for a medical evaluation. Brandon's quick response and efforts to talk to the subject is what resulted in him not jumping off the bridge. So with that, we presented with a life-saving ribbon that he'll wear on his uniform. That, and he gets a personnel letter and then a commendation for framing when he retires. So congratulations, Brandon.
Next up is our agenda approval, so Brad, you had a change?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to request the council remove item set, excuse me, item 4B, settlement agreement and payment for the Twin Pines Project. The settlement agreement was presented to the homeowners, I believe, last week as part of agenda prep. I think they have some questions about it. They'll comment in the public comment section on the agenda item, which is still there, item A about the erosion control and cleanup, but I think for the sake of giving them some time to ask some questions and have us respond, I'd like to pull that item from the agenda.
All right. 4B?
4B.
And then Graham?
And Mayor, well, first I'd ask, is there anyone here for Aqua Sewer Plant discussion? Mayor, I had, sorry, anyone? No. I would request that item 8 be removed. I have received some communications from some citizens that they would like to speak on that matter, so put on for December 9.
Okay. Any other changes? Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as with the changes? All right.
Second.
Motion, second by Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
As have it. All right, Kevin. Twin Pines Erosion Control and Cleanup Work. You doing tonight?
All right, how are you doing? I'm going to follow police heroism, but. Counsel, here tonight with, well, with that amendment to the agenda itself, really only seeking approval for the erosion control and stream cleanup work behind 1012 Twin Pines. And if you recall, that item stemmed from the September 23 council meeting where council elected to not pursue the full stream restoration project along this stream. One, due to the high cost estimated at $250,000 to perform that project, but mainly because there would be negligible improvements to the flooding that these property owners are experiencing. Instead of performing that full stream restoration project, council elected to pursue this minor erosion control and stream cleanup project behind 1012 Twin Pines, and that was in accordance with a USACE Army Corps Engineers recommendation during a site visit back in August. And so, in addition to that, I know this isn't necessarily on the agenda as well, but in addition to that, just to add a little more context, it was also discussed to, because we know we received $78,000 from True Homes, the builder of this development, for remediation assistance along this stream. And knowing that, council requested staff to formulate a settlement agreement and come up with a settlement payment based on True Homes' financial contribution to the town, as well as taking into consideration the cost for this erosion control and stream cleanup work, erosion control and stream cleanup work, excuse me, as well as some tree replantings that were agreed and approved as a part of the August 2022 bank stabilization project. So ultimately, since that September 23 meeting, staff, we finalized the scope of, of that erosion control and stream cleanup work, got a cost estimate associated with $25,000 for, for that work, and what, what is encompassed in that work is, let me see if I. Ultimately, what that stream cleanup and erosion control work looks like is right here behind 1012 Twin Pines, basically along the curve here. There's some sediment buildup in the channel, the stream vegetation buildup, and some riprap that has been lodged in, in the channel bed, along that property line there in this stream. So we'll go in, clean all that up, get, get that out of there, and then what we'll also do is install some vegetation along the banks here to mitigate long-term erosion. Now that's the construction aspect of it, that $25,000 also encompasses construction administration as well as final permitting with the Corps as well. And so we also receive cost estimates for the, the tree replantings upstream for a couple property owners upstream here. We expect that to be $8,500 total. And so, and again, I know we're not approving that settlement agreement tonight, but ultimately, staff believes it's a settlement payment of $12,500 is appropriate. That also allows for additional contingency in this erosion control and stream cleanup work, based on that $78,000 received from True Homes, as well as those tree replanting and construction costs for that. So ultimately tonight, I'd be happy to take any questions, but ultimately, staff is only seeking approval of that erosion control and stream cleanup work. Any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve that item A, and at some point, I think homeowners want to, want to speak about the settlement agreement, which I pulled, but I, I think it's appropriate for them to speak as well.
Go ahead.
Item 4A, erosion control.
What's the amount? $5,000?
$25,000, yep.
All right, got a motion by Brad?
Second.
$5,000 plus the $8,000.
So this item is just the erosion control cleanup behind 1012. When we address a settlement agreement in the future meeting, we'll talk about the trees, which led us to the 12-5 settlement agreement per homeowner, but yes, answer your question, yes.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, Brad said there's some residents that wanted to speak, so.
And some context, as I mentioned before, the settlement agreement was distributed to the homeowners a few weeks, excuse me, last week as part of the agenda, so I spoke with one of the Monica Hunsaker on the phone this morning, had some questions and concerns. Our attorney's not here tonight, so that's why I pulled the agenda item, I recommended I liked us to hear her concerns, and there may be others to speak as well, totally fine, and then have some time to respond and kind of figure out a response to her concerns, which I think some of them are very legitimate.
Good evening, how are you? Thanks for having us. So we did receive the settlement agreement, I say we, we all kind of read through it together. Some of the things that stood out that I wanted some more clarity on, and I'm not comfortable signing just yet around the language, is there's some language in there regarding the town taking ownership of the maintenance within the easement per the stormwater policies that are set today. So I know that there is an easement around our property, around the creek, I don't know exactly what that looks like. And so getting some more clarity from the town around where is the easement, what does it look like? When you say we'll maintain it if anything happens, what does that mean? I think maintenance falls under what you're doing on Chad's property, 1012, in that cleanup, because we do get a lot of settlement, settlement that comes through after big storms, so is that the type of stuff that you, that the town would be responsible for? So we need more, I need more clarity around what that particular line, item means. One of the other concerns that I had was, it was the amount, but it was the amount not understanding what the easement maintenance took into consideration. Again, go back to the example of 1012, it's $25,000 to pull out the settle, sediment that has filled in the creek. I have done that myself, my neighbor has done that herself with shovels, renting back hose, we've done that work ourselves. And so the dollar amount for the settlement won't make a difference in, won't make much of a dent if that will be on the responsibility of the homeowners going forward to ensure it doesn't fill in. So the amount and understanding the easement maintenance kind of go hand in hand together. And then the settlement today, from my perspective, is status quo. It's the conditions we have today and the water we have coming through because of the development of True Homes. I would like to have protection against any damage caused by an increase in water volume due to permitting of additional construction that would feed into this stream. So if down the road, there is additional construction that then would feed into this same flow, the current settlement agreement says the town is not responsible for that. So additional understanding, language, agreement around what does that look like if knowingly or unknowingly create construction or projects that increase the volume of water that's going to go through there? Because anything we do to fix today could be damaged later on. Those are my three big ones.
Get your name and address for us.
Yes, Monica Hunsaker, 1006 Twin Pines Drive. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd like to recap, but I feel it's a little bit necessary. The last meeting, you mentioned a comment about we've already spent 226,000. Chad Foster, 1012 Twin Pines Drive. Property proposed to, sticks in the back, so. Reason I recap real quick is only because in 10 years, you guys might all be gone, I'll be 70 years old, and I'm not going to be digging. Worry about if I sell it down the road. Not worried about a little water coming over every year, more than that, so. I think when these went in, and it was even mentioned before, the guidelines or whatever for a town like this back when the True Homes was put in or back then is nothing was ever done to the creek or watersheds to stop the water, so you, all these houses. Put quite a load on that creek going all the way through. Problem is, you've already gone in, again, to your point, spent some money going in there to fix it, and they put a whole bunch of rock in there and basically made it worse. Rocks really don't stay, they fall down, and then they, they pick up all the sediment coming down in those big storms, and if you come out and look at my property today, which Kevin, some of you have, all the walls have collapsed down in, so the creek is actually about, you know, a foot wide, and it's kind of like this. Could have done it, a little maybe got with the Army Corps, whatever does, you can't stop the amount of water, so it was determined a couple times ago that, how do we manage the flow of it? The, it's got to flow naturally and it's got to be able to go through Army Corps. Problem with fixing it and doing it has decreased this thing, and it gets worse, which means the water, when it does flood, gets closer and closer to my house. It's a good bit to the corner of my house, but the water gets all the way out. The worse that creek gets, the more causes. I'm not worried about it coming over a couple times, but through a way, if you're going to dig out this dirt and make it the walls, I even sent Kevin, I think a picture of Kevin's next door, that's how it's supposed to look. Won't always stay perfectly like that, but not having rock was what your engineers told us the last time, is rocks should not have been put in there because it just. Oh, the 25 grand in the plan they sent to me in a picture, it really doesn't tell me much, it's a picture, doesn't tell me what they're going to do. Take out some of the sediment and plant some stuff in the wall. It's fine, I appreciate it, trust me, I appreciate addressing it and doing it, but I'd rather get a fix. I'm not looking for the city to spend $226,000 in my neighborhood, I just want the stability of that creek. Want the stability of that creek to be somewhat lasting. If you get the grass in there, I think it'll be better if it can get grown to where you'll have less erosion and stuff like that. It'll be more natural, but it's got to be able to handle a certain amount of volume. So if it's going to crumble again, it is right back here. So the other thing you guys mentioned, and it's been mentioned before, is obviously the town's responsible for these creeks. But again, I'll be 70 years old in 10 years, you guys won't be. I don't know what the trigger is if this thing collapses again seven years down the road, and do I just come up here and say, would you guys come out and clean my creek again because it's like buttoned up against my house? I don't know what the, what's, what's, what triggers that, or what happens there, so. Anyway, I can.
I mean, I think the clause that's in, that she's talking about, where the town, it's actually in there, keep me honest here. Kevin, I'm looking at you, man. The reason why that clause is in there is that the town is not going to stop maintaining the responsibility that we have to maintain that area. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's the whole reason why we put that in there, so that folks understood that that was going to continue. We're going to continue to maintenance that, just like we maintenance every other waterway that's in town.
Just trust my concern is just, I don't know what that is, I'm just some old guy with a piece of property. No written, like it has to drop by two feet, has, there's no, I don't know. I assume, I trust, you know, and stuff like that. Right now, I just, if you can just get most of the rock out of there, and I don't even know if removing all the rock is part of this. You guys are just taking sediment out, but are you just going to? Call me later on that, you don't have to spend a lot of time on what happened with that. Good points, thank you for bringing it up. Anybody else?
Larson, 1008 Twin Pines Drive. One item that stood out to me in the agreement that made me uncomfortable is, I believe, it's section four and section eight, where it mentions that the agreement would succeed us, meaning once we sell the property, because we will not live there forever, the new homeowners would be subject to that agreement, which makes me uncomfortable, and is why I would not sign that agreement. I would not want it to be something that the next homeowners would have to be held to, if that makes sense, which is why I would not sign it as it stands today. Thank you.
There, that was one of the questions I'd like for our attorney to kind of give us some direction on, is this the type of thing, it feels like it is, but is this the type of thing that's disclosed to future homeowners, travels with the deed, and has any effect on value of the property? So those are the types of questions that have come up over the last five, six days, in their minds, voiced to me today, that we probably ought to spend some more time on before we assess that there might be another tweak or two. So we've made some notes, this meeting is recorded. Is that okay with y'all?
Yes, sir. Well, nobody wants to get this project completed more than the council. So appreciate y'all coming out tonight, and Brad's done a great job leading the effort on, from a council standpoint of view, and we'll keep trying to find solutions, so thank y'all.
One of the things that. I don't, I mean. So that work is going to move forward, right? So, I mean, do. I think one of the things that I heard is kind of a question on whether or not we'd be able to have to evaluate that. So is there a time period that we're looking to necessarily make that agreement? Or could it be after the work's been done? Something to think about.
Well, Ms. Larson said she wouldn't sign the agreement as it's written. Haven't heard the others say that, but that's, that's something that I don't think we have a deadline on when this needs to be finalized. We're trying to work through a really great solution, everybody's comfortable signing. Right, so there, so there are some concerns, and those are the ones that were mentioned.
Thank you all. All righty, next up is Kevin, again, sanitary sewer update.
Hello again, council. Here tonight to get with Matthew Schussmith and Chandler Allen from Kimble Horn to give y'all an update on sanitary sewer study that we've got going on. And just as a reminder, this project started and was approved by council in September of 2023 to evaluate and analyze options to bring sewer capacity into stallings specifically in two areas, one area being around the town center here, and the other area being around 74 with the hospital on both sides of 74 there. And that, that was approved with the understanding that Union County will not be providing any additional sewer capacity in the foreseeable future, 10 years at a minimum, and that stems from conversations that their board has been having for the past several years at this point. And so before I hand it off, really just what we're trying to accomplish here tonight is obviously give y'all an update on everything we've discovered and found out since the February update, but what we really want it to be is just a Q and A session, allow y'all to ask any questions you might have, open it up for discussion between council with the ultimate goal of providing staff with guidance on how we want to pursue this study. Because from what we found out since February is that sky's the limit with this. We could pursue any options, there's obviously challenges with certain options, but we, we really have the capability to go in any direction with this. And so I preface this presentation by saying that, and with that, I'd hand it over to Matt.
Okay, so first off, I'm happy to be here, hopefully answer any questions you guys have, and happy to present what we, what we've been working on so far. So I wanted to just start by recapping if we go back to the last time that Kimble presented to council was back in February, and that's where we had our preliminary sewer demand estimates that we had worked out for the different areas. There's four different areas that we were looking at. And we presented the communication to date that had been with, with Charlotte Water, and at that time, the feedback was to continue the study and get a deeper focus on what we could do to identify what would need to happen with both Charlotte Water and Union County. So that's what we've been working on since February. Okay, as a recap, this is the exact same figure that we had in February, I thought it was a good place to start from, and it identifies the four areas that we were looking at, and the flows that are shown there in the different bubbles are the flows that we determined would be necessary to handle the individual parcels that were identified and what their projected land use would be. And then this also shows the relative distances from at least a part of each basin to existing infrastructure that Charlotte Water has. Okay, so that's the minimum distance that you'd have to convey sewage to get it into Charlotte Water system. We do know now from talking to Charlotte Water that even though that's true, the dash lines are existing infrastructure, those infrastructure, those facilities are already, some are overloaded, they don't necessarily have the capacity to take additional flows. So with talking to Charlotte Water, the next step really for them was for us to present what they call a preliminary capacity request. So it's not an actual development yet, but what it is, it's preliminary to get into their system, so they'll know that someone at least has interest in sending these amount of flows to Charlotte Water. Okay, so working with, with Kevin on that, we said, well, if we're going to show a number to Charlotte Water, that they're kind of keeping back there saying stallings might be interested in this amount, rather than just those parcels that we looked at, let's look at the larger areas, or the, all the parcels that are included in these different areas. So we went back to the four areas and looked at the, kind of the, the multicolored ones are different land uses, those individual parcels that you see there on the screen were the initial, what we were calling near-term development, actual parcels that developers have shown interest in, and what their projected land use would be. Well, also, if you look on the left figure for the Potter Pleasant Plains and Stallings Town Center areas, there's that yellow larger area in there that weren't individual parcels, but we said if we're going to see some development there, we made some assumptions about land use would be, and so we increased the number, and you can see those two numbers, both in near-term and full build-out. And that's the same thing that we did for Town Center, and then the scales on these two figures are different. It's actually a much bigger area for the ones of West and East Independence, but that green shaded area is the additional spots there. That represents a really large area, so when we did full build-out, we assumed about half of that would be built out with, with the assumed land uses. So moving forward, these are the totals for all the different areas that we put into the pre-capacity request document from Charlotte Water, okay? So Charlotte Water has these on file that for these different four areas, there's roughly 123,000 gallons a day in Potter Pleasant Plains, another 94 in Stallings Town Center. The other areas, I said, were much bigger, so there's three, or 737,000 gallons, if that was to be, that would take longer, but that's what the total would be, and then East Independence was about 752. So Charlotte Water is aware of, of those numbers, that that, that could be what that is for. Okay, so updating on the coordination with Charlotte Water, they're a ways from being able to provide that, right? It's not just a matter of, of getting it there at this point. They currently are experiencing surcharging between the areas that we could most likely connect to Charlotte Water system and their McAlpine plant. So they're doing some additional modeling, they are probably going to have some, some CIP projects that, that address some of those issues, but one of the major pinch points that we're aware of is there's only a few, there's about four in this area crossings, and some are relatively small that go under 45, and that's a very expensive addition to go through. So currently, the largest crossing under 485 is 16-inch, and Charlotte Water has been approached by developers looking at properties in Mecklenburg County that are on the south side of 485. So they're already considering possibly putting in a new crossing underneath 485 that would be gravity. Now, we do some tunnel design work for Charlotte Water, I've got some going on around Moorhead right now. As a rough estimate, that project will be somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000 a linear foot to get a, a large diameter tunnel underneath there. Definitely with them already having 16 that's at capacity, whatever, whatever pipe went in there would definitely be larger than 18. So that's, that's one of the constraints. It is not planned right now for any point in the future, other than they know if they're going to serve even the undeveloped properties that are still in Mecklenburg County, they're going to have to do it. Okay, so the, the, the pre-capacity assurance program did accept what we turned into them, so what does that really get us? They're not going to start a capital improvement project based on those flows. What they will do is now they have that on file, and if they are moving forward with any infrastructure increases in that area, they may reach out and see, or they will reach out and see, what, is Stallings still interested? Is there a cost-sharing opportunity? Should they size that to be whatever, 36-inch instead of 24, if it looks likely that Stallings may do that at some point in the future? It doesn't guarantee a yes, and it doesn't guarantee any kind of timeline, but it is officially notified that you all have an interest, and they'll reach out to you at the point that the project should move forward. Okay. And that's basically what I said there, that Charlotte Water, since they don't have a legit, there's not an actual development there, we're not asking for it tomorrow, it'll be in their CIP, and then they'll continue to coordinate. Now, there's, there, there are several challenges with this. One, the significant costs that I was talking about, how would the cost-sharing responsibility break down? Is this something that developers would have an interest in contributing to? And then is that developers in Stallings as well as developers in Mecklenburg County? And then one of the biggest challenges really is the existing infrastructure that you have here that handles sanitary sewer obviously flows to Union County at this point, right? So even if Stallings got to the point where, yeah, we're ready to do this, we think we've got funding source, or we've got, you know, stock shareholders that are interested in this, you'd still have to find a way to be able to collect that sanitary sewer and send it over to them, right? And that would be a real challenge for a town that currently doesn't have a sanitary sewer department, right? So even if you were going to put in a pump station, you still don't have the easements to collect, and you'd have to randomly pick from some properties where the other properties are remaining to go to Union County. So really what that, to me, what made sense is if we're looking at this as an option, we really need to bring Union County on as a partner, right? Maybe there is a neighborhood or a pump station that already exists that they can divert a lot of flow to Charlotte Water from, and then free up allocation somewhere else in their system, right? A way that it makes engineering sense to do that. That was the idea we had when we, when we reached out to coordinate with Union County, just talk through this idea and see what options would be possible with them. So the first of those meetings occurred with a teams meeting with Union County staff where we kind of addressed this, and then we decided it made sense to meet in person. So we met with, I guess there were John Schutak and Audrey Lofton, there was at least four Union County folks, and then Alex and Kevin both went with Savannah and I, and we met in person and, and laid these options out to hear what they had to say about those, with the idea is if everybody was coming together as team, it might really be possible to find some way to send water to Charlotte Water to increase your guys' allocation. Okay, so there were, I tried to highlight just the findings of that meeting and the things that they had. They have some areas, like in their six-mile basin, where they are sending sanitary sewer over to Charlotte Water now. They pointed out that for the county, that ends up being their highest treatment cost per gallon of sanitary sewer, the fact that they, that they send that over there. So it's more expensive for them to send it to Charlotte Water than it is to treat in one of their own existing water treatment plants. They were concerned that if they were sending some out there, how would they do rate structure, and who would affect if they have a higher rate for some of it, how that would work? So that was part of the concern. When we presented the four different areas, they kind of felt like your Potter Pleasant Plains and, and Town Center were kind of closer or more likely to be able to be served by the Union County existing infrastructure, but they were saying that the Independence two areas there probably would likely with those kind of flows, maybe that made more sense to go to Charlotte Water in that area. They said that their, their board may be interested in talking about something like that, but probably it would make sense to try and identify funding sources or possible funding sources before we got that far to go there. And then they also shared with us that they've had similar concerns from Indian Trail, and maybe there is yet another stakeholder we could bring in that would be interested in some type of sharing with that in the event that, that, that was likely to be an outcome. And then the last thing that I didn't mention, skipped over, was their board generally prefers commercial development over residential for whatever reason. They had other concerns with bringing in additional residential. So if the plan was to bring in commercial, they thought it would be more likely, favorably looked on by Union County's board. Okay, so we did learn something else where we were out there. This has been going on for a long time, the fact that Union County is somewhat capacity-limited, and there's been plans to upgrade some of their plants that have been on hold and put back on, and there's been several dates associated with that. But the 12-mile, at least the first phase and upgrade is ongoing now. So that's got a plan, I think they're opening bids already, they're likely, or the plan to have that, if, hopefully there's not construction delays, but sometime in 2027, they're expecting to add an additional 1.5 million gallons a day to the 12-mile creek water treatment plant, which will free up allocation for not just Stallings, but, but other individuals or other municipalities. Okay, so right now, they have proposed, not set, but they have proposed based on CARPO analysis, what they're anticipating for Stallings is an additional about 97, well, 97,500 gallons per day in that 12-mile creek drainage basin. Okay, so that's, that's what they're thinking. They also said there's a new CARPO studying coming out, and those numbers aren't final, so that may go up or down a little bit, but at least right now, that's the draft number they're thinking about. So I wanted to take a second to present, what does that mean, right? Where is that basin that drains to 12-mile? And so this is a figure from Union County's GIS information, which they were also, their staff was actually very helpful about this, and they offered to give us access to the GIS, so we can see that better and look at it, so that's where this, this actually came from. And that 12-mile drainage basin that's going to get the 1.5 more additional capacity is shown here, it's actually really dark purple, but in this slide, it looks like it's really a dark blue. It's the biggest portion of the figure, that's what's draining to 12-mile. Now, there is also a separate area, the Poplin area, that's kind of in that really light green, the bottom one there, is the 12-mile. is the 12 mile Poplin area. That's not directly in the 12 mile drainage basin, but they have pump stations that pump that over into the blue section and it ultimately drains into, into the 12 mile basin. So the, the additional 1.5 is between those two basins. So what you're probably most interested in is how does that affect the study areas that we were looking at with this study? So this is your study areas overlaid on Union County's existing basins. And so when you look at Potter Pleasant Plains, you'll see it's split between Crooked Creek and 12 mile basins, with the majority still being in the Crooked Creek Basin. Crooked Creek Basin is not getting additional upgrades. And then by the time you move across the street to Stallings Town Center area, that's wholly contained inside the Crooked Creek Basin. Again, the basin that's not getting upgraded. And then same thing, the vast majority of both of the Independence areas are also in that Crooked Creek Basin. So that's a little less than favorable. There's a little bit of that you see on the extreme east side that goes into that, that's that Poplin Basin that also goes to 12 mile. Okay, so that, that's how that falls. And then whatever allocation that Stallings does get from that, which is right now estimated at 97.5, is not just for the four basins that we were looking at. That's the total increase for all the Stallings area, right? Go ahead, I'll do my best. That's the, that's the way it was presented to us. And they used, so there's, there's an organization, the Carolina Rural CARPO. So Carolina. There you go, thank you. Rural Planning Organization. And they looked at like what they think development is likely to be. Union County is still capacity limited. So the way they're allocating that out, they're not trying to say this is all you might ever need through here. That's just what's available. And right now, they're thinking Stallings amount that they're going to allocate based on whatever distribution they're using is somewhere around that close to 100,000 gallons a day.
Hospital is a big part of that. Is any of this?
So the hospital, I think, is already allocated. I believe that flow is already approved and everything. So that's the, my understanding is, Kimley did the site development for the Union West Hospital. And, and my understanding is that is already accounted for and would not come from the 97.5. Because that, that's already approved. Well, so expansion, if it's not, if it's not been previously approved in some type of permit already, then it probably would. And expansion beyond what's, and at this point, I don't know exactly what projects the hospitals got planned that have been approved already. But anything that's currently approved would not come out of an allocation that's likely to come out in another two years, right? They would have had to have capacity to be able to do that already. Hopefully that helps.
Are you Union County resident, right?
I am, that's correct.
The sewer.
I, I do. Unfortunately, I am my own water and sewer provider, which wouldn't be by choice, but I have a septic tank and I have a well. And at the time that someone offered me to connect to either one of those, I would gladly do it. So.
But is it realistically, does the one? Expansion down on 12 mile, was it one and a half mil? How long do you estimate that to be? Growth rate that the county's?
Oh, I, I, I think that the 1.5, as soon as the allocations are out there, that there's enough development demand out there that that'll be used up right away. It's not the only upgrade that Union County has planned to that plant, but it's the, it's the concrete one that we can say is actually happening.
That in writing, but I, I know enough about. I know enough to know that. I think it'll be. Allocated in nothing flat?
I think, that's my opinion, yeah. I, I think that there's been kind of a moratorium on a lot of things in Union County for the majority of the time that I've lived here. Basically sanitary sewer flow has always been an issue. And I, I think just at the rate that Union County is likely to develop, if they had more sanitary sewer, I don't anticipate that to take long to use up to 1.5.
Three years after it's open, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's a good guess.
Oddly drastic thing, so I'd like. Million gallons per day. How does? Immediately allocated.
I think part of that question comes back to what is your propensity for new development, right? If you, if you really don't want a lot of new development, then obviously it'll last a lot longer. So I think that's kind of the political issue there.
Property rights state. Has to be a use for every property, right? We can't just say you can't. Some of this is become, become the bull of the world. You can say no. But by right use, we can't. If we have.
All right, and I'm happy to try and answer any question you've got.
How it's calculated?
Yeah.
Allocation was the word they used.
That's the way they presented it, yeah. And, and the way they came up with what percentage becomes your allocation was based on the CARPO study. And they said there's another one of those coming out late this year, an updated version. Yeah, but it's, it's probably not going to turn into 400,000. You know, it might turn into 105,000, but somewhere pretty close to that number.
Are inside the areas that even that?
So, so that's a good point. And we, we looked at that too. That's where the next slide is, right? So if we're looking at what are connection options, we kind of talked about some of them as we went through. But option one is, that was the first thing is what is, are we likely to be able to connect to Charlotte Water? It offers a lot of challenges. Number one is Charlotte Water hasn't come back and even said they have capacity in this area yet. You know, they've got to do their own studies and they will have to upgrade their own infrastructure before they can do that. There's high costs associated with that, not necessarily only by Stallings or Stallings developers, but other people could potentially share that. But there's, there's quite a lot of need for multi-party agreement, right? Union County would have to come to the table and be willing to send some of their flow that way and then give you guys more of the allocation that was offset from sending that there.
High costs on option one.
Yeah, so there's, there's really, depending on how you do it, there are several, right? 45 is, is a big one to point at. But they probably need or will need, because they're having some surcharging, capacity improvement along all of their gravity system all the way to McAlpine. Now, that's not, they've got to do that anyway, right? So how much of that could potentially be cost sharing with developers or Stallings? I, I don't know the answer to that yet. But then you also have to get it there, right? It won't go there by gravity. So even if you identified an area that Union County had that you were going to send there, that maybe already had a pump station, you'd probably have to do an upgrade with that pump station, put a new force main in so you could get it to the spot that Charlotte Water says you could discharge here and we could take it from there. So there would be a cost associated with that. And then, of course, there's that partnering that would have to be, Union County would have to agree to do that. And then they'd have to agree to say, okay, we sent them 100,000. So you guys now have 197,000 you can allocate instead of just the 97. So there's, there's a lot of hurdles that we'd have to come through to get to that. Oh, gosh, they can be anywhere. I mean, I, I hate to even throw a number out there, but that could easily be well over a million dollar project, depending on how much we're sending there and how long the force main is going to be.
At least a million.
Yeah, yeah. And then is the force main going to, do you have an easement? Like, is it going to run on an NCDOT right away? That's probably easier, but if you have to buy private easement across private properties, you know, then that can be very expensive too, obviously. So it just, the, the projects vary so much based on what you have to do. Okay, so part of the problem with the figures that I presented was even though you're getting additional capacity, it doesn't seem to line up exactly with where the areas you guys asked us to study for development. There is an easier option to that, and that is Union County could be developer costs, could be town costs, should be some kind of, some kind of cost sharing. But for a smaller pump station with a shorter force main that just runs to where the divide is that goes to either the 12 mile Poplin area or the 12 mile direct drainage basin area could allow you to allocate that, your, whatever allocation you do finally end up with in basins that are close. And I guess that's the good news is your Potter Pleasant Plains is kind of a split across the areas. And then Town Center area is relatively close. You pump it across the street and get it to a spot where it can gravity and go from there. So that would just be a smaller pump station. I'm still, I would still envision that as being owned and operated by Union County. But it might be something that could be like a developer donated project. And then, then you might have the ability to develop some of the parcels that you asked us to look at in the study in the relative near term.
My understanding that Union County is not. Large ones in the last couple of years.
Well, they certainly have a lot of pump stations. I think in general, just if you can get sanitary sewer to flow by gravity, that's free, right? And it can go to the nearest pump station or to the plant that way. So anytime you put a pump station in the system, now you've got the O and M cost. You've got the constant electric cost. It's, it's generally, you know, you would only put a pump station in if you had to for some reason. So I think that's where you're getting pushed back with, with Union County or honestly, any municipal sanitary sewer system would always prefer to go gravity if that's an option. None of the, none of the options, this is easy slam dunk, you know, we don't have to hardly do anything for this option. But this one seems feasible just because distances are shorter. And in some cases, especially in Potter Pleasant Plains, you're really close to that basin. We're not talking about move and flow very much. So option three is kind of what we were talking to about Union County. Let's say we were trying to do something that was a capital improvement project for Union to send to Charlotte Water. They basically told us that for, for, to get Union County interested in that, there'd have to be a funding source identified. So is that something that can be done through some combination of Stallings and developers? That, that would be an option that we could go back to or that could be, depending on where it is, if it allocates some additional flow for here and some additional flow for Indian Trail. There might be someone else that's interested, that's a stakeholder in contribution to that. So that could be, and then the fourth option, if you guys really wanted to set up your own utility department and sanitary sewer department, then you could start the process of either trying to purchase infrastructure from Union County, set your own gravity system that went close to, but didn't interfere with Union County's. I mean, I think this is probably the most challenging, right? And then if you didn't build a wastewater treatment plant, which would be a multimillion dollar endeavor, then you still need to provide your bulk sewage to somebody. And you're already in Union County's distribution system. So it wouldn't make sense to do this to give it right to Union County. So that would be something you could do and have control of your own future. But you'd still probably need, you would need Charlotte Water as a, as a partner there. But then it would just be between you guys and Charlotte Water if you did have your own sanitary sewer system that you maintain.
My question to Alex today. Where, where are they sending that sewer to?
And honestly, that neighborhood I'm not familiar with, but there are, I mean, I saw there was Aqua on your agenda, right? There are private sewer providers that do that. That would, that would be something they'd have to do if they were going to build their own plant.
Have somebody to take it.
Yeah, somebody's either got to, they either have to have somebody to take it or they had to build a plant to treat it and, and get a NPDS discharge to discharge the clean water back to the streams. Yeah, so that is an option. That's just a really expensive option if you're going to build a wastewater treatment plant. Honestly, probably the plant. If you were going to build a large scale plant, those things can be, you know.
I'm talking about a, a plant.
You know, there, there's a cost benefit there. I mean, I was, the real numbers for putting a sizable tunnel under 45 at $5,000 to $7,000 a foot add up. And if you're talking about a small 100,000 gallon a day wastewater treatment plant, yeah, that, that's probably a cheaper option. But the, the small package plant that you might put in somewhere, you're still going to have to have NPS permitting, have to have staff to operate it, it's going to have O and M costs. And sometimes those small plants that don't have like 24 hours a day staff that are there are a little more troublesome to run, cause odor problems and things like that, right? It's not a perfect solution either.
Obviously, the private sewers like Aqua and the one that was on the agenda, making money.
Yeah. Well, and that's where your sewer rates come from. And of course, yeah, Aqua does make money and their, the rates they can charge are regulated and they have to, they have to submit that through the state anytime they have costs that they need to distribute back to their rate payers, so.
Timing. All of them are long term, in my opinion.
Yeah, the shortest one is you're likely to have allocation that you could use no earlier than 2027. That's correct.
This is very interesting, by the way. Good work.
Yeah, I wish, I wish I had better answers, honestly, but we.
Well, to me, it's, you know, I'm just disappointed. Met with them, but the leadership of Union County is just hands off.
But.
Large development project in Town Center. Let's just say a large, something we loved, which would put people around the park, put retail in the next couple of years, sort of a plan. Seven that could compete for that. Capacity for that in that allocation. Large catalytic project could be there in 2027, 2028. Short of that. Option two, pumping it. That's why I don't need it tonight. Developer framework for participating in Stallings. How might you approach? How might we buy this piece of land, build this project? Options for you as a developer. Helpful for me. Helpful for misinformation. But here's what needs to be done.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, I think the only answer we can give to people now is sorry, right? There's not a whole lot we can do, and that's a good answer. That's the answer. But what is more, what's an answer that would be a little bit more proactive? Given all of this, in 2027, we might have an opportunity, and here's how we would get to it, but in 2028, 2029, if that gets exhausted, as a developer, you could help us by building a pump station. Uh, you know, that, that's the kinda helpful answer. Developers, a lot of land for sale right around this town hall that could actually turn in the next couple, three years. I agree that the 97 might get eaten up pretty quickly. What are some? So what's the answer? I guess what I'm asking for is there a...
Counties drop the ball and is not really willing to address it anytime soon.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him for you to write something. I'm just helping. Write answer to those questions. Might we, as a developer?
If you have plans showing what you want. Pass that to developers, especially in this area. How much capacity we have, here's the lines that need to be installed. Formal approval from Union County.
Added development where the flow was less than the allocation, that was outside the right drainage area, that the answer would probably be, if you were to put in a donated pump station to Union County standards that they would take over, the project could go forward. Donated projects for developers in Mecklenburg County a lot. If there's some water, water line or sewer line that had, needs to be upgraded, limit like, maybe it just needs to be extended there. It's not usually plant capacity driven.
Have you done any of those in Union County?
Uh, so, I don't necessarily work with our Development Services group. I'd be really surprised if we don't have something in Union County that's donated. Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything right now.
I'm looking for the last, like, four years worth, back, back four years.
Now, my group is doing a neighborhood extension water line project in, in Everly. Water system. Not addressing the sewer, yeah. Side development for... Both water and sewer system to get that hospital in there. But they, they accepted the flow from there. Generally, they have a different rule for hospitals.
County seen this presentation yet? Well, we, to me... Analyzing this, to me, I think... First, only, only topic should be on Wuma's agenda is sewer. Manager coming there. That's the only topic.
Or, but I can tell you, that's the top one.
That's gotta be top. Yeah, we just need to meet with the county commissioners. Different answer from different people.
Um, the, the 12-mile expansion, 97,000, is that, that capacity spoken for, or, like, projects that we've approved that are on hold?
No, projects that have been approved should already be in the system. So if, if it was approved for construction, well, that should, the, Union County should have already, if they've given a capacity assurance letter, they said that project can go through for a project already?
No, I mean, the ones that are on hold that they don't have sewer, they don't have any approval for sewer. Are those, like, gonna be first in line? Is there a queue, or how does that, how is that working?
I don't know that I can answer that, actually.
So to build off that, there may be something, and this is purely conjecture, in Indian Trail or one of the other towns.
But that wouldn't affect our allocation of 97,000.
So, I think, sort of going back to a prior question, my big question would be, how ironclad is this allocation when it does, when they do finalize it? Because, say, Indian Trail, they're allocated 150,000 gallons, and they come to this, County later, you know, a month later and say, "By the way, we have this big project. We need 250." And they just, like, can they take it from us later? Because my big concern is if we start going around telling anyone, "By the way, we think that there's 100,000 coming up," that that comes back on us, "Well, you told us you had 100," you know? Like, I, I just wanna understand how ironclad is an allocation versus more of like, "Well, we're setting it aside, but, you know, it's a set aside. We can always dip into it."
What was presented to us is there will be...
Yeah, and I understand that. I mean, again, I wanna, like, there's hearing something, and then there's...
Well, that's why we gotta meet with the county manager and the council.
Like, like, I would basically wanna see that in writing. Like, that's never gonna, you know, this is yours. It doesn't go away.
I agree. As it was presented, it, it seems like it's guaranteed.
Past, they've approached us, and they've, the concept that they've been working on. Establish those kind of parameters. At least explored it in the past. Feel like we've got good direction, folks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll contact Melissa Merrill.
Or is still chair?
Oh, he's still chair?
Times or places, let us know.
Yeah, we'll have directions for you, Kevin, on... All right, Matt, so now, thank y'all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee, committee application. She didn't make it in, she said, yeah. Student, Sophia Cordova, senior at Porter Ridge, term expires on 3/31/26. Do they have any reservations or wanna make a motion? Anybody know her? Barring, uh...
Hi.
Let's have it, all right? Alex, the priority and budget decision-making process.
All right, so, as you know, one of the things that this board has made a priority is when we do budgeting and, and kinda financial management of, of the town, being good fiscal sewers. Part of that is, is not just looking with blinders on at a budget year. It's tipping, it's tempting just to look and say, "All right, let's just get the balance, the budget balanced, and we'll worry about next year, next year." But the board has taken a more proactive, forward-looking stance and said, "Hey, we wanna look beyond just the budget year to make sure that the town's in good fiscal health is, so how do we, in the future, make sure it remains in good fiscal shape?" So, we've done a lot of five-year forecasting, things like that, and we know the, the past couple of years of, are gonna be challenging. Last year was challenging. We anticipate this next year being challenging as well, and a complicating factor being the Union County property tax reevaluation. So, we've got good feedback from the process last year. Seemed to be successful, and the feedback, again, was good. And so, I've taken any of the constructive feedback we've got, try to retain a large part of that process, and it's presented tonight for your consideration. So this is the budget creation process, as well as the annual retreat and priority setting process. We've tried to integrate it all into one. And again, the goals are to make the process efficient and effective, where you, as our elected officials, feel informed to make good decisions about money, but also services. Foster collaborations, foster transparency, provide an opportunity for a couple, public input, and provide us as staff clear direction so that we can make a budget that meets the board's goals. So, staff are recommending, you know, just the attached process. I'd be to walk through several pages of the process if it'd be helpful, and, or answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, go ahead and give us some...
Walk through there, Alex, sure? Sure, glad to do it. So, one of the things that we're looking at doing is, starts tonight, right? Approving the process, hopefully approving the process. I don't wanna be too... And it starts out with next November, doing something that the board honed in in, on, in our last budget process, fund balance, our reserves. We wanna have enough to where we can have a healthy fund balance, be in good fiscal health. But the question came up, what is the right amount of fund balance to have? And instead of making it on the fly, we wanted to step back and, and kind of analyze it and give it some thought so that when we go into the budget process and the five-year forecasting, that will kinda dictate some of the tools and the ways we look at things. So, look, hopefully approve a fund balance po, policy. And then from December, that's mostly internal staff work. And then we get really hot and heavy in January, so we go over our existing priorities. We provide the five-year fiscal projections. We have a budget retreat. One of the things we heard last year is the board wasn't, didn't wanna do an additional Saturdays. Monday evenings are better. So we've proposed a couple dates there. Kurt Walton, we got good feedback from the board on Kurt, so we're bringing him back and kinda walk through, look at the budget guidance, fill out the scenarios the board might like. And then, at the same time, being prepping for the annual retreat in February, working towards setting our priorities, making sure we're all on the same page. And then Kurt would have individual meetings with each council member beforehand to make sure that our work at the retreat was, was, was successful. February, so that's the actual annual retreat themselves. And again, continued internal staff work. By then, we've gotten direction from the board on the various alternatives that the board wants to consider. Doesn't mean you can't consider any down the road. You're not locked in, but it allows the scenarios for the board to consider. So, going from there, we've got, out, coming out of February, we've got the board's formal priorities set for the year and several scenarios. And now we can lock in, and the board can hone in on the various scenarios, ask questions, walk through it, and determine, all right, do we wanna start narrowing down the scenarios that we wanna consider? We might not be ready to commit to one after that first meeting, but maybe we can eliminate one of them and just keep looking at the two. And then ultimately, by the end of March, the board will be selecting a scenario they'd like the manager to, and, and staff to create a budget on. So, from there, staff would go back in the magic shop. We create a budget. We bring it back to the board. And this is really where our old budget process started, right? The manager brings y'all a budget, and, and then we have the department budget meetings, if, if that's helpful. And then ultimately in June, we have a budget public hearing, and the board just needs to adopt the budget by the end of June. So, that is the process.
Talking to Alex today, the, looking at the January meetings, the first one on the 21st of January, and then I asked him to do the one on the 27th to February 3rd, 'cause I'm gonna be out of town on 27th. Any of these dates don't work for the, and then that date, 21st and March 3rd, and then February 22nd for the annual retreat. Alex?
Yes. When the actual new... Tax rate or new, new evaluations are gonna go out? Is that... Yes, he was at February, March, the final ones. So, it's my second question. Uh, they've just gotta set their rate by the end of June 30th. We don't know when, yeah. So, I'm, I'm gonna presume and, and kinda testing by presuming this, is that the board is satisfied we can move that one date from January 20, 27th to February 3rd. We'll send, we'll send out calendar invites, but the board is approving this process? Is that okay? Is that okay? Bye. Could be potentially higher than that. That's just the conservative number we're using. Well, if there are no other questions, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for your work.
And thank you for Aaron and Jesse for your work on this as well. They've been a big help.
All righty, all right. Well, that's, that brings us here. We don't have the Aqua, number eight's been removed and we'll put it on the night, twelve-nine. So can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Laurie, second by Graham, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's have it. Thank you all.